In progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could remain standing for a moment of silence particularly for the lives lost on September 11th, 2001, and all the victims who continue to suffer and their families. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hoz.
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. LaScavage.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present?
All right, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County LSA grant. I don't have any slips. Is there anybody in the audience? Uh, Mr. Griffin, you have a slip for an agenda item on the voting session. Okay, this is just for the ordinance, for the LSA, the LSA grant, not the other ordinance. Okay. Anybody else? Any public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? I don't see anybody. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. We'll restart at 6:01. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
All right, it's 6:01. I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hoz.
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. LaScavage.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. La, Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present?
All right, thank you. We do have one proclamation this evening. It is for Think Big. And I'm gonna read it now. "Whereas Think Big Pediatric Cancer Fund is celebrating 10 years of serving pediatric cancer patients and their families, and whereas there are no words that can ease the stress of a parent hearing the phrase 'Your child has cancer.' While it has been said that it takes a village to raise a child, it takes caring courageous people to help a family battling pediatric cancer. And whereas Think Big's mission is to relieve the stress of everyday financial expenses, so families battling pediatric cancer can concentrate on treatment and healing. Because caregivers often have to take time off work during their pediatric cancer treatment, families of children with pediatric cancer struggle with unexpected out-of-pocket expenses. By providing financial support for everyday living expenses and unpaid medical bills, Think Big aims to minimize this stress. Since its inception, Think Big has awarded nearly $1,500,000 to 250 families in our region. And whereas Carmine Monacelli was nine years old when he was diagnosed with a form of bone cancer. Throughout his chemotherapy and radiation, Carmine was always upbeat, sharing his hopes and dreams for the future. Thinking big." Unfortunately, cancer claimed Carmine's life in March of 2012. But with Carmine's Think Big attitude in mind, Dr. Westner created Think Big to support pediatric cancer patients and their families. And whereas Think Big recognizes the financial strain that accompanies a pediatric cancer diagnosis and offers valuable support to families within our geographic footprint who otherwise might not have access to financial assistance as they navigate hospital treatments. Think Big wants to alleviate the stress of pediatric cancer while focusing on treatment and healing." That's a quote by Dr. Colby Westner, Think Big founder. And Think Big, at its last board meeting, voted to expand its geographic footprint to include five additional counties, bringing the total to more than 30 PA counties. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, declare September as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month in recognition of the steadfast service of organizations like Think Big and the resilience of those affected by pediatric cancer. Thank you. If there's anybody here from Think Big, you can come up and grab the, uh, grab the proclamation. And after the voting session and before the work session, we're actually gonna go outside and take a picture in front of the courthouse gels, which are lit up in gold, well, in yellow, but in gold, uh, for Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. So if members of council would like to come out after the, uh, after the voting session, we'll take a picture. Yeah, absolutely. You can go up to the podium, um, and turn on the microphone.
Thank you, everyone. This means a lot to Think Big. It means a lot to the families who are battling pediatric cancer. I have been on the Board of Think Big for four years. Prior to that, I worked for the Luzerne Foundation. And, um, there was an opening for an executive director, and when I read that job description, I said, yes, that's me. And the reason it's me is because I lost a granddaughter to pediatric cancer, and Think Big was there to help my family the same way where we're helping other families. Um, they, you know, you, I think you said it well in this app, in this proclamation about how it takes a village. You have no idea what it's like for a family who receives that diagnosis. And believe it or not, every day in the United States, 47 families hear those words, "Your child has cancer." It's incumbent upon all of us in Luzerne County, as, uh, was shared, we're in about 34 counties across Pennsylvania, as far west as Altoona. In Luzerne County, it is our largest county of need. And these are our friends, our neighbors, and, and some people we don't know. But we've gotta come together around this cause and help these families so that they can just breathe a little easier. We're not gonna solve the problem. We're not going to find that cure, but we're gonna be the hug that those families so desperately leave. So thank you for this. Thank you for making this proclamation. It means a lot to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ducko. And as I may have said to you in an email, as a, as a graduate of Penn State University, which runs the largest student-run philanthropic organization in the world, FON, which is dedicated to pediatric cancer research, uh, when I saw this come across our desk, I thought, we absolutely have to do this. So we're very proud to, and we can't wait to take that picture outside, too. So stick around until after the voting session. Uh, before we get started, Attorney Skeen, could you please announce the executive session?
Before the meeting today, we met in executive session to discuss litigation matters.
Thank you, Attorney Skeen. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove items 10, 11, and 12 from the voting session agenda to be put on at a later, at a later date.
Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Hoz?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
What's the reason for delaying it?
Well, administration wants us to wait a couple of weeks to flush out the budget a little bit further, the, the 2025 budget.
Is this gonna push anything back with getting bids or trying to do the work?
I don't, I don't believe so.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Did you?
Yes?
She voted yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
It passes.
Any other? Thank you. Any other deletions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. I have two slips up here. Uh, first, I have Mr. Griffin.
Greg Griffin, Swersville. Members of council and, uh, fellow citizens, uh, I'm speaking on agenda item 13. Motion to introduce ordinance affirming protection for election workers for intimidation, harassment, and assault. I agree with the district attorney. He, he said, this is not necessary, this ordinance. We have crimes code, uh, laws, uh, ordinances and that are in place. There's any problem for intimidation and harassment of election workers. You know, I look at it as an attempt by certain factions on council who are introducing this to maybe muzzle people's First Amendment. Uh, we did, we did protest when there was 12 or 15, uh, military ballots that were dumped in the dumpster, and we were out on the sidewalk. And, uh, we were allowed, as required, you know, as allowed by the First Amendment. And, uh, you know, we were protesting the election workers', uh, negligence for having those military ballots in the dumpster. And, uh, it was our right to protest that, but I see this as another encroachment by a Justice Department. Thankfully, we have a good district attorney who does not think that this is necessary. He's against it. Uh, but we could get, you know, we could get a sympathetic district attorney someday that would say that, uh, Greg Griffin was on the sidewalk, and, you know, he was very loud, and there, there was, there was election workers that were intimidated. And, uh, I'm going to court. And, uh, it's gonna stymie people's, uh, ambitions to go out and, uh, and protest peaceably. And so I think the DA is right. I thank him. He's a great district attorney, and I thank Chairman Lombardo for speaking out against it. It's really not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next up, we have Ms. Harvey.
Erin Harvey, Wilkes-Barre City. Uh, so Sunday morning, I was reading the newspaper, and I came across, uh, this ordinance on the agenda tonight, number 13. Um, and after, after reading the article and the ordinance, it inspired me to come tonight, to tonight's meeting, uh, to express my opposition for this. So I wanna start by saying that I absolutely support the safety of all election workers, especially since I was the Deputy Director of Elections in 2021, and then I was the Director of Elections in 2023. And in those two years, I personally did not receive any threats, harassment, or assaults from any member of the public. To my knowledge, none of the Bureau employees or poll workers received any as well during my time with the Bureau. I would, I did an interview, uh, last year with the Associated Press about election threats. None of my interview made the story because I did not fit their narrative. I always felt safe at my job. Again, I support the safety of all election workers, but I do not believe that there are any act of threats to any election workers in Luzerne County. And again, to echo what Mr. Griffin said, since the district attorney is the highest law enforcement officer in the county, I think their office has enough to worry about, uh, with shootings and trying to keep violent criminals off our streets. So again, if someone seriously feels that they're being threatened, they should file a police report like every citizen has the ability to do. I ask council to vote against this ordinance as I believe its purpose is to spread fear and confusion to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Uh, Mr. Walsh? And then Mr. Granteed.
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I'm also here to speak in opposition to number 13, uh, because in the past, the county was asked to bring evidence forth to prove that there was some kind of harassment or intimidation, and they failed to do that. Instead, they did a 60 Minutes interview, I think it was, on CBS, and they talked about how, you know, they're all intimidated and all this stuff. Now, I just want you to think about the context of this. If you were seriously concerned for your well-being as an elected official, would you go on 60 Minutes and show your face and talk about this? I mean, come on. This is a scam. Whatever's going on here, which also, uh, it kind of meshes with what took place about six weeks ago. There was a group of us that got called from a national broadcasting service, and they flew into town, and they interviewed a whole bunch of people in the county, and then they tried to pigeonhole us citizens into an interview. But we didn't fall for the bait. So that was probably so they could run the story in order to pass this ordinance. It's not necessary. I mean, come on. We all live in this community. No one's been threatened. No one's been intimidated. Let's, like, knock the nonsense off. We have a big election here in, what, six, eight weeks that we have to get prepared for, and we're dealing with this? This is absolutely ridiculous. Not one person has come forward and gave one ounce of credible threat or intimidation against them as an election worker. We all know it in this room, and I don't know what Ms. Smith's trying to pull here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Granteed?
Joe Granteed, Plains Township. Um, I, I have the same position as Jamie and the rest of them. I'm against this, uh, number 13. The way I see it is, um, it's not meant to protect the election workers and, uh, people who work in Election Bureau. I think it's more, uh, targeted at people who wanna be poll watchers and, uh, who wanna a fair election and wanna, you know, keep their eyes open and date the people who are gonna watch the election, not the people who are administering the election. And I think it has something to do with some of the, um, things that are rolled out for this election that certain people want to have happen every election, and the people of this county don't want it. And the pressure might be getting to certain people on the Board of Elections, um, because there's so many people who are speaking out against it. And if we're talking, you know, if some people don't know what it is, it's drop boxes. Most people in this county don't want drop boxes. A certain few do. And I think that's where this, uh, this comes from. And one other thing I'd like to ask, and I don't know if it's on the agenda, but you guys have, um, executive meetings before, and we get a two-word explanation of what they are. Is that all we're entitled to?
Is that your, end of your comment, Mr. Granteed?
That's my, yeah, I'm done with, with, uh...
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we, we do, we do sometimes put the, uh, put the synopsis of what the executive session was about on our agendas, and we, we have been doing that practice. Um, this agenda, it's not on there. I'm not sure why, but typically we do.
I mean, it doesn't tell us anything when they say, like, two words.
Right, understood. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Ms. Edwards?
Desiree Edwards, Swersville. I agree with Greg, Jamie, Joe, and whoever, oh. So I believe that this is just what it's said to be, a scam, and just more fear mongering. And nobody has been harassed or intimidated. And if they were, I'm sure it would have been in the newspapers. But I think this needs to be squashed because this is, you're, you're trying to push an agenda, and we're not gonna fall for it.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? All right, we have a couple of hands up on the Zoom. Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? This is Bart Raybo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a slightly different take on agenda item number 13. I agree with the district attorney, uh, in what he said about, uh, the jurisdiction, uh, that council does not have the jurisdiction, nor does any county have the juris, any of the county officials have any jurisdiction to mandate his office to supersede those state regulations that, uh, apply to elections, especially the state constitution, because Mr. Chair and members of council and manager Pocomo and administrative officials are Title 25. So I would like to know how the Office of Law missed, uh, you know, as far as the council person putting the ordinance forward and not seeing that this could be a real problem in terms of exposure to litigation, not only by, and I'm not saying that the DA will do this, but the DA could, you know, uh, uh, file an injunction against this, or also the state could come in. And the state will not like, uh, a county to go rogue, even especially by one council member who doesn't know what they're doing. So I would, I would strongly suggest, uh, defeating this ordinance before it brings more embarrassment to Luzerne County by Harrisburg, because as I went to state meetings for over 12 years, Luzerne County has been used as an example of what not to do and what not to be to other counties. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, as I sent in my email to council and to, uh, the county officials, the, the Governor Shapiro convened a state task force in terms of any kind of election intimidation, uh, at the, in, uh, earlier this year in February. So even if this was allowed, why does it have to be redundant to have another, uh, task force headed up by the DA when all the district attorneys throughout the 67 counties are part of this, uh, task force by the governor in terms of election intimidation? So I, I would strongly suggest that the county, uh, the council, uh, vote to defeat this, uh, before more embarrassment and, uh, litigation, uh, exposure happens. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Uh, next up, we have Beth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I am in favor.
Can you please state your, your, your full name and your municipality, please?
Yes. Uh, Beth Mate Miller. I am in Dallas Township.
Thank you.
Um, I'm in favor of agenda item 13. I think that if election threats don't happen, then the DA's office won't have to worry about them. But having these in the books will allow the funding and the appropriate, um, resources available to address them should they come up. Let's hope they don't. If they don't, everybody's should be good. And honestly, just taking the time to make sure that our election workers are protected is probably the most important thing that we can do to make sure that our elections have integrity. And I'm actually shocked at how many people are not for this. It's nonpartisan in every aspect, and I don't understand how voting and protecting poll workers has become a partisan issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Herring.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow council members. So the reason that folks are in opposition to this...
Sorry.
... I, I'm speaking tonight in, in absolute opposition of that ordinance that I feel bad for you guys. It's kinda wasting your time with all the public comments at the beginning here. Um, the reason folks are against this is because it's 100% partisan, unlike the last caller stated. Uh, there's a false narrative that's being pushed. That false narrative is this so-called threats. I'm gonna send you guys a, a copy of our, uh, order that we received on September 14th of last year. Mr. Walsh already alluded to it. It's important to have facts and figures in front of you, not just people's opinions. Um, this was a court hearing that took place in front of, uh, Judge Lisa Gelb in item number 26, which was on page 24. It talks about her opinion and her supplemental opinion to the Commonwealth Court. On here, she, she states verbatim that Luzerne County provided only speculation and conjecture when it came to threats against any election workers. This is very important because, again, this is, this is true fact. This isn't just somebody's opinion at a council meeting. Uh, what happened in this case was we asked for video surveillance from the 2022 midterm election, which was known as Paper Gate. And instead of providing a reason for it to be a security exemption, Judge Gelb went out of her way, and she gave the county 10 more days after our oral arguments to produce some form of evidence to the court. They had 10 days and could not produce one lick of evidence at all. So this is a boogeyman ordinance that was made up by somebody that does not know what they're doing, and they're wasting your time here. It's also possibly not even legal, which the DA already alluded to. But I want council to be able to make objective decisions here, and objectivity, when you look at this court ruling from the judge, will show you, there has been no evidence of any voter intimidation whatsoever or any election worker intimidation that was proven. Bring it to the court if it happened. I'd be the first person to back you up. But you can't just make up something and say, "We have a problem here," when there's no proof of the problem. If you keep repeating the lie enough, people, some people will believe you, and that's what they're trying to do here. It's a false narrative. Like Mr. Walsh said, why would, why would folks go on a media tour if this was such a threat to what they're doing? They're just trying to intimidate people from overseeing the election process to make sure that it's a free and fair election, which we are going to do this November, to make sure everything goes as planned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Uh, Mr. Griffith, I saw you had your hand up. I'm not sure if you're still here. Did you have something, uh, did you have a public comment? All right, I don't think he's on anymore. All right, we'll move on to Ms. Fassaro. Go ahead, Ms. Fassaro. Ms. Fassaro, you there?
How about now? Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alyssa Pucero, Luzerne. You know, I, I struggled with this, but I, I had to speak up. I think that there's, um, I think there's something going on with, uh, you know, I, I went into the election office, uh, about a month ago, maybe a little bit more, and I noticed new signs up that say, "No photos, no video," um, which is actually against, uh, the, the rights of the people. But neither here nor there, put together with this ordinance, it is very clear, to me anyway, that they're trying to keep people out and to, um, you know, make it look like there, uh, there are credible threats, um, against the, uh, workers. Um, you know, I, I, everything that has happened to me has actually happened from the officials themselves, um, uh, of Luzerne County. of Luzerne County. I don't see any, you know, I've actually never had any major, major issues with some of these people that are, when I'm in the office especially, I feel pretty safe. And I think that it's just spreading fear of going to the office and being able to have your issues handled in a proper manner. And I think that people will shy away from, you know, going to that office because they feel like they can't, you know, they can't witness what is taking place. And it's to intimidate and intimidate the people from actually being in that office. I think that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, like Mr. Herring said, show the proof. You have the proof, show it. And then maybe there's, maybe there's something that can be done on that end to that, to protect that specific person. And I think that that's something that we need to take, may need to take a look at. But if it's not a, if it's not, you know, we're constantly, this has been handled, this has been touted by the media as well. And I don't know where it's coming from. And the only thing I can think of is to intimidate the voters themselves from coming to that office and from witnessing what's going on. And from coming to adjudication and to these meetings and to make them shy away from, you know, watching and, and, you know, having their say at the end of the day. And I think that, you know, when we put those cuffs on, we could be causing more harm than good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fasaro. All right, next up, we have RK. Can you please state your full name and your municipality, please? We, oh, hold on. Okay, try your microphone now. All right, hold on one second. You can unmute yourself? All right, we're having trouble hearing you.
Not happening.
Oh, okay, we can hear you now.
Thank you, Chairman Lombardo. Apologize for the technical difficulties. This is Ron Knapp from Annecote, Pennsylvania. These, this Agenda Number 13 is nothing short of redundancy to the harassment laws workplace. I agree with Mark Raybo's suggestion that it would just cause a lot of litigation problems for Luzerne County. It was mentioned that during one of the public comments, that it's trying to take the eye off the ball. And there's a lot of circumstances that will be revealed regarding the drop boxes and the security cameras watching them, lost data. And I feel that this is nothing short of a a statement out of the movie Despicable Me and the Minions going to work for somebody who's been caught with their pants down. I feel that the District Attorney is doing a fine job. And I don't see any form of harassment. And I hope the county council always take consideration that this is literally overlying or overstepping the citizens' rights. And we have all a right to free speech. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Mr. Shapiro?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Shapiro.
David Shapiro from Kingston. I think this Agenda 13 item has been introduced to try to get the response, elicit the response that it has. So that way, they have the ability to go out and say, "Oh, the, you know, these people just want election workers harassed. They're in favor of election workers being harassed." No one's favor, in favor, almost no one is in favor of election workers being harassed. I think it's redundant. I think it's there to attempt to message to the media. And I ask that you, the council, respectfully oppose this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. All right, I don't see anybody else on the Zoom. All right, we'll move on from public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 27th, 2024 voting session?
Second.
Mr. Lescavage and Ms. Krishnowski? All right, motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chair, I have to abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay. Minutes are passed. Moving on to the Agenda. Number one, motion to adopt the order that's amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the LSA grant.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski? Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for common ground ministries. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski? Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes, and could I ask everyone to turn their mics on? I cannot hear the votes. Thank you.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Dallas Area Municipal Authority.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no?
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Luzerne County Information Technology Department.
So moved.
Mr. Wilovich and Ms. Krishnowski. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act Awards project for King's College.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Lang Beverage Company.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no? Passes.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Lawrence Kansky versus Luzerne County at all.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
I have to abstain from this as I have a personal relationship with Mr. Kansky.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Regrettably, I vote yes.
Ms. Lawrence, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Ms. McDermott's vote.
She voted yes.
Thank you.
Seven yes, two no, and one abstention. Passes.
Number eight, introduction of the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for MHDS.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's automatically introduced via the county manager.
I'm going to introduce the ordinance to the amendment. I do have Tara Fox here to speak if there are any questions about the grant that was awarded.
Sure. Can you turn the mic on?
Thanks. Want me to explain the grant?
Sure.
It's exciting news.
Absolutely.
We were awarded a $4 million federal grant. This is a highly competitive grant. And this will allow us to focus our services on the zero to eight-year-old population. Specifically, working with families in both Luzerne and Wyoming counties who have significant challenges, including high poverty rates, impact their ability to provide basic necessities such as food, clothing, and shelter. Many of these families also experience social isolation and trauma, further exacerbating the difficulties in addressing their children's social and emotional needs. Both in Luzerne and Wyoming counties, reports indicate that neglect and abuse are affecting over 500 children, with approximately 20% of those living in households where intimate partner violence occurs. That on top of the pandemic and its aftermath have further disrupted quality childcare access, leading to increased isolation, hindering the social and emotional development of many children identified. And those deficits, so our plan is to address these challenges comprehensively by focusing on social, emotional, cognitive, physical, and behavioral aspects of child development. Because you can't fix one of those components without addressing all of them. So.
Any questions for Ms. Fox?
Good work.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. All right. Number nine, we have the introduction of the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the multimodal grant.
I will be introducing that ordinance and I have Nick Vog here if there's any questions.
Mr. Vog?
Good evening. This is just to put in the multimodal for West County Road into the budget that wasn't put in last year.
Any questions?
Pretty much it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vog.
Thanks.
All right, the next two used to be Number 13 and 14, but they're now Number 10 and 11.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm sorry. Don't we have to take a vote to introduce that? Doesn't require four?
No, no, anything introduced by the county manager as an ordinance is an automatic introduction, yeah.
I apologize.
Yep, no, that's okay. All right, next up, we have Number 10, motion to introduce the ordinance affirming protection for election workers from intimidation, harassment, and assault, and enhancing collaboration with the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. There's a motion. Is there a second? Going once.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Please note for the introduction of the ordinance, there's no-
I couldn't hear, Mr. Chair, I couldn't hear who made the motion. I think the mic was off.
The original motion was by Ms. Smith. The second was Mr. Sabatino. Yes, and for the purposes of this motion, there's no discussion on the merits of the ordinance. We are just introducing it. So I'll call, roll call.
On the-
Go ahead. Sorry.
We have to motion to, we've motioned to introduce it. Roberts rules.
Sure.
I'd also like to make a motion to amend it.
We can't amend it until after it's introduced.
Sorry.
So there will be amendments forthcoming, though.
Yes, I wanted to make clear on the question that what we will be discussing will be an amended ordinance that has been given to the entire council and was given to the Office of Law. But it did not get posted for some reason. So it is not out yet, but it will be published.
Yes. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Sure, I'll vote to introduce it.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Hawes?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yeah, I'll introduce it, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
You have four yes, it's introduced.
Okay, thank you. Number 11, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a member to the Luzerne County Community College Board of Trustees.
Move to open nominations, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. James Dennis.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Arthur Breeze.
Oh, hold on a second. Is there a second for Mr. Dennis? Who was the second? Mr. Lescavage? Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce or nominate Arthur Breeze.
Arthur Breeze. Motion, okay, there's a second for Mr. Breeze. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Bernard Graham.
Is there a second on Dr. Graham? I'll second the nomination on Dr. Graham.
Motion to close nominations.
All right.
I have one.
Oh, all right, Ms. Smith.
Motion for Mr. Linsky.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second for Mr. Linsky? All right, motion for Mr. Linsky fails for lack of a second.
Motion to close nominations. Second.
All right, all in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We have three nominees. We have Mr. Breeze, Mr. Dennis, and Dr. Graham. So we will go around the room. Please state your preference. Top two will advance and the bottom one will be eliminated. Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, Mr. Thornton?
Mr. James Dennis.
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Hawes?
Dr. Graham.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Lescavage?
Mr. Dennis.
Ms. McDermott?
James Dennis.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Stevenson?
Arthur Breeze.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Graham?
Four for Dennis, five for Breeze, two for Graham. The top two would be Mr. Dennis and Mr. Breeze.
All right, thank you. We'll move on. We now have two choices. Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence, with the roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Hawes?
No candidate.
You're abstaining?
Abstain, yeah, because my candidate didn't prevail.
Okay.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Lescavage?
Mr. Dennis.
Ms. McDermott?
James Dennis.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Stevenson?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Dennis.
We have a tie. Five to five. We can go around one more time.
Okay.
If anyone wants to change their vote.
I'll change my vote, Ms. Lawrence, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll vote for Mr. Dennis.
Okay, all right, we'll have to go around one more time.
That's fine.
I apologize. All right, one more time, Ms. Lawrence. Yes, please, thank you.
Mr. Hawes, you're first.
Mr. Dennis.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. Liscavich?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr., excuse me, Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Breeze.
Ms. Stevenson?
Breeze.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Wallowich?
Mr. Breeze.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Dennis has six.
All right, we'll now have the resolution for confirming James Dennis. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wallowich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
You have eight yes and three no. It passes.
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody in the audience for public comment? Anybody? Mr. Walsh? Yeah? Yeah, make sure to turn that on. Or else Brian will yell at you.
I think, I think it's on. Yeah, I think I got it. Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. I gotta be honest with you on number 13, just going back again. When over 40 Republican-dominated precincts ran out of paper in 2022, and we filled the rotunda with 250 people, not even that day was there any intimidation. Oh, there was a lot of people that came up here and spoke, and they were upset, and there was no intimidation, there was no threat, there was no assaults. And the reason I know this is all a charade by Ms. Smith is because if she was so passionate about passing this, she would have listened intently to every single person's public comment. Instead, she sat there for 25 minutes while everybody spoke, staring at her cellphone, texting. Like, she has no respect for the community. None. It's an absolute disgrace, the charade and the time that she wasted here today. I don't know what they're up to, whoever she's involved with, but it's a disgrace, it's a waste of time. And I don't know what people expect when elections have not been very strong in Luzerne County. There seems to always be a situation, the last one went great. But it's getting better, and it's because of a lot of changes. I'll give a lot of credit to Ms. Crocamo. I'll give a lot of credit to the council. But this is not a distraction we need right now that she's trying to create. So I don't know how much time this is going to take up at the next two meetings, prior to the, well, the next meeting, I guess, prior to the election. But there's a lot bigger fish to fry here, and I just want to thank most of council for voting that down. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Mr. Grantied?
Joe Grantied, Plains Township. I'd just like to bring up the four ballots that were unsigned, that were witnessed by the same person, deposited into a Dropbox, which I believe is illegal to do, and haven't been investigated by the Honorable District Attorney. I would wish that the people in this room would speak up so that the people voting this November will have confidence that everybody in a position to do something is doing it, and I don't see it happening. And I keep bringing this up. We have possible fraud, we have no explanations, and it's not acceptable. People are not going to feel good about any elections until the people in this room do the right thing. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Ms. Edwards?
Desiree Edwards, Swears Well. I said to my neighbor as I was sitting there, I watched you the whole time as we were...
Ms. Edwards, please address all your comments through the chair.
Well, she was on her phone the whole time, because I watched the whole time. Her face was buried in her phone. So I have a question. Is the Election Bureau a public place?
Is that the end of your comment, Ms. Edwards? You still have two minutes and 26 seconds.
If the Election Bureau is a public place, the last I knew, you were allowed to have a camera in a public building or public forum. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? All right, we have two hands up on the Zoom, three hands up on the Zoom. Mr. Griffith, we'll let you go first since you weren't on the first one, I missed you.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. Well, to say I'm disappointed in four people that voted to introduce this ordinance is probably an understatement. If this council would have sat down and read their charter in Section 217, that says you can interfere with the day-to-day operations of the county manager, and also Section 2, I think it's 209, 208, also Section 3 of the charter, that deals with telling the district attorney what he can or cannot do, they would have known not to introduce this ordinance, first of all. Second of all, I'm very disappointed that the Office of Law even allowed this thing to come to the table. This ordinance is bad on its face. It shouldn't even have been allowed to come to the table. And then for council to vote for people to introduce it on the assumption that we're going to amend it, and we already have an amended draft that wasn't provided to the public prior to the meeting, is another infraction that shouldn't have happened according to Sunshine Law. So all of council has a copy of an amended ordinance that Ms. Smith intends to use, and the county residents never got a copy of that in the agenda packet. Clearly a violation of the Sunshine Law, because you guys have something on your agenda that we don't have. And I think this is just bad all the way around. We have constables at polling places mandated by the Section 25, Title 25, to keep order of the polling places. There is no intimidation. They threw military ballots away, we protested. That's not intimidation, that's our First Amendment right. Anytime somebody has an issue, there was issues in the Bureau of Elections last year, the year before, with two individuals that supposedly were harassing somebody at the Bureau of Elections, and nothing was done to those folks at all, because they have a right to be in a public place. This ordinance is bad, and for four people to even think about introducing it is really embarrassing for me as a county controller, but it's even more embarrassing for those folks that voted for it as council members. That's all I can say. I just don't know what else to tell you, but you really, really need to read the charter. That's what you're sworn to uphold, and the state constitution, and the state laws, and this violates all of those. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Raybo, Hazelton speaking once again. I would like to echo what Controller Griffith said and expand on what he said as far as the group that was put together after the 2020 election. Mr. Haas sat on that, the Election Inquiry Committee of County Council, which, Mr. Chair, you said that you would bring back after Paper Gate, was to speak, was to spoke on election security issues and made recommendations on that subject, as well as the state legislature put together a bipartisan group that would take suggestions from county commissioners, election officials from the 67 counties, and I do believe Deputy Secretary of State, Mr. Marx, sits on that group, on that advisory group, to amend Title 25, that takes those suggestions and takes it up with the state legislature. So I don't understand, and also, as I said earlier, Governor Shapiro has enacted a state task force on election security with Secretary of State Al Schmidt on this. So, and along with the state police, the state Attorney General's Office, and the 67 DAs. So this is just nothing more than a political stunt by a council member. And I think this is denoting a pattern of behavior on this councilperson's part to score political points for some unknown reason. Maybe that councilperson likes to disclose it publicly, or maybe not. But I think that this is just, enough is enough already. All right, if you want to be on council, or, you know, to enact ordinances and follow the charter, then be on council and enact ordinances that can follow the charter. But if you want to be a state rep, then run for state rep if you want to change the laws of the state and the state constitution. Don't hide behind a council seat pretending to be a state official, because that does a disservice to the voters that voted for the council members, and as well as the voters and the taxpayers of Luzerne County. And, Mr. Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't remind council that today is a very solemn day before September 11. The Latimer massacre happened 127 years ago, the greatest tragedy in Luzerne County's history. Now, this is not reflective of the current Sheriff's Department, but it was an egregious action by the sheriff's office 127 years ago against 19 unarmed minors, and it gave birth to the modern-day workers' union. So I don't understand why nobody brings this up. I'm the only one who brings this up, I guess because they're Slavic...
Thank you.
...people that were killed. So I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be honored, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Mr. Herring?
Oh, I just hit the unmute. You guys should be able to hear me now, right?
Yep.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, clearly not trying to tell you how to do your job here, but I believe two folks just said that there was a violation, which I also have been to many, many open meetings, that you also have a Sunshine Act violation. You can't introduce an amended product to an agenda that's already way ahead of that 24-hour timeline prescription that you have to have. So you might want to go into executive session and talk about that. Anybody here in the public can sue to have every agenda item that was voted on tonight removed by the Court of Common Pleas. But you cannot, you can't amend something during the meeting. It has to be broadcast 24 hours in advance.
Mr. Herring, just to address your comment, the agenda item was not amended. Ms. Smith just basically stated that she intends to amend the agenda item. There was no discussion on it. Council did get a copy of the item over 24 hours prior to the Sunshine Law stipulations. However, it was not reviewed by the Office of Law or discussed at length by myself before that period of time was up, so I determined that I didn't think the amended item should be on the agenda, because I wasn't sure of the legality of it. So that's all. So the original item was on the agenda. There was nothing amended about it.
Understood.
Yeah, that's all it was.
Thank you for that clarification. I misunderstood that at the beginning. Okay, great. Finally, and I'll try and be quick, I don't have a lot of time. I think you guys may have a conflict there. I just want to, I want to make you aware of this, but I want to do it publicly as well, so that there's no confusion. We found out yesterday, there's been somebody, you guys all remember the Randall Road situation many years ago. There was an anonymous fake profile floating around on social media that was disparaging, you know, conservatives, pretty harsh, and that profile was deleted because that person got found. Well, we believe yesterday we found a new one that has maybe six to seven profiles. The reason I bring this up is because my lawyer is sending a cease and desist letter tomorrow. Some of you on council are part of that disparagement. We're looking into all of our options, but you may have a conflict, because this person may be contracted by you right now, providing your video footage for this meeting. So there's going to be more to come, but I want to make sure you understand that, but I also want to make sure the public understands that, that we believe we found the person spreading all the hate in this county on social media, and we're going to take him to task starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Ms. Fusaro?
Alyssa Fusaro, Luzerne. I just wanted to thank council for voting this down for many reasons, not only the legality, but I really, truly feel that it is voter intimidation, along with the signs that, I don't know if they're still up in the office, but, you know, I'd ask either the county manager or the council to look into that, because it is a public building, and the voters should feel that they have a right in that building to, you know, to exercise their First Amendment rights. So I just wanted to thank you all for, you know, not going through with this, because I think it would have been a real big mess, and it would have made things look poorly on our county, and everybody knows I love this county, and I, you know, I just think that we need, we're doing so well, and we're getting there, we're almost there. And just thank you for noticing that and continuing in line with that. And I'd also like to mention that, and thank the county manager for what she's been doing, and the work she's been doing, the tremendous work she's been doing with the Bureau, and even coming in helping, you know, answer some questions and stuff at the Luzerne County Board of Election meetings. And I just wanted to recognize that and say thank you. So thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Fusaro. I do just want to make a slight clarification. I know that Ms. Fusaro said that she appreciates that council voted this down. However, although the majority of council did not support the introduction of the ordinance, it only, the charter only requires four individuals to introduce an ordinance, and four individuals did in fact support the ordinance, so it is introduced. So we will discuss it at a further meeting after this. Is there any other public comment?
Chairman Lombardo, I'd like to make a statement.
Go ahead, Ms. Crocamo.
I want the public to know, and all election workers, and poll workers, and judges of election, and anybody involved with the election this year and going forward, regardless of whether an ordinance is enacted or not, Luzerne County will have a safe, secure, and transparent election. It's my obligation to deliver that, and I will, regardless of whether there's an ordinance or not. I don't need an ordinance to tell me to do that. I will do that.
Thank you, Manager Crocamo. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. It's 7:04 PM. We're going to restart at 7:15. If the council members can join us outside on this, which would be, what, the northern, southern, southern, southern face of the courthouse, so we can take a picture? Please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, our screen has gone. Our cover page was up and now it's gone.
It's not blurry. Yes, I was tasked with a picture taking.
I'm sorry, I was spacing.
See, should they call it gene?
At least we.
Is that what she said?
Really? Oh, we can have fun tomorrow. Oh, that's okay. We don't care about that. Oh, yeah, we're going to have fun tomorrow. Really? Okay, well, it doesn't mean we can't have a little fun about it. What I'll do is I'll sit in your seat when you're speaking and that way I'll be on the end, so we could just go.
All right, council members, it's 7:16 PM. I'd like to call this work session to order. We have already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hos.
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present?
All right, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. We will now have the, uh, division reports for August 2024. Manager Crocomo?
Thank you, Chairman Lombardo, as usual. If there's any questions or comments, uh, you can call, text me, uh, or email me. Uh, there are some things that I want to highlight. Uh, the first is that we'll be having our town hall meeting on the 18th at 5:00 PM at our operations building. Everyone is welcome. Uh, I also want to acknowledge that, uh, our county controller, Senator Baker introduced a bill to ensure fair compensation for law enforcement agencies serving PFA orders. Uh, our sheriffs do that, they do yeoman's work. Uh, but in her, uh, statement, uh, she said, and I quote, "The need for the change was highlighted following a 2022 audit by the Luzern County Controller's Office, which recommended that any enforcement, law enforcement agents serving PFA orders other than the sheriff should invoice the sheriff's office for reimbursement." Uh, and noted that, uh, Luzern County is not a place to avoid anymore, which, uh, I've been saying that for a while. Uh, the final thing that I want to note is, um, 23 years ago, this evening, I had to work late. We had a brief due to the Court of Appeals. I was on the second, 72nd floor of the Empire State Building and, um, it was raining that night. And I had the view, I had the view of the World Trade Center. I could see the Verrazano Bridge. I always will, always will call it the Verrazano Bridge.
Fine with me.
Yes, and, uh, of course, the Statue of Liberty and the East River. And, uh, it was raining and the lights in the tower flickered. And then the next day, we all witnessed devastation and bravery. And I will always remember that. So tomorrow morning, we are going to have a special, uh, memorial, uh, for, um, the anniversary of, of the attacks, uh, on September 11th. And, uh, we're specifically going to honor our first responders. I, uh, I saw the look in the eyes of the firefighters who were driving down Fifth Avenue South, um, to the Trade Center. And, um, they knew exactly what they were facing. And they were facing death. And they went in with their, the equipment that, hundreds of pounds that they carry up. And they went into those buildings to try to save lives. And they didn't leave for days. Because they stayed there in the rubble, trying to find their comrades. So tomorrow we will have, uh, a memorial at 8:30 and you're all invited. And, um, it's something that we, uh, individually and collectively can never forget. And we can never forget that those days and weeks following those attacks, we were one nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crocomo. Once again, if you'd like to join us tomorrow, 8:30 in the morning, uh, outside of the courthouse, I think it'll be a beautiful ceremony. Okay, oh, and Manager Crocomo, I just did have one question. What time was the manager's town hall at on the 18th?
5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, we'll have, um, the Luzern County Housing Study presentation by the Institute. We have Ms. Ums.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Ums and I'm here with my colleague Jill Abristoss from the Institute. We were the recipients of an ARPA award from the county and we thank you for the opportunity to use those funds to develop a, a countywide housing needs assessment for Luzern County. Housing is one of the major social determinants of health that impact individuals at every age, and it's their physical and mental health, ability to perform academically in school, and their ability to be productive workforce, workers in our society. So housing is a critical component of our economic development future as a region, and housing has been a challenge for a number of years, which is why we really wanted to do this study, to bring to light the state of housing in the region and potential opportunities to improve the housing for all individuals. So to give you, uh, an idea, we're going to, Jill and I are going to do a very short summary of the study. I know you have the PowerPoint in your packets. Um, there is a 200-page document that really goes into significant detail, if you would like to read it at your leisure and of course, call our office or email us at any time to respond to any questions that you may have.
Ms. Ums, we, we would love a copy of that. If you want to send it to all of us, that's fine, if you can.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. You were right about this. Anyway, so let's talk a little bit about the study background. So housing changes, uh, have really been a, a challenge for decades. Housing stock in Luzern County is old. It's, the amount of housing built before 1940 is twice the state average, three times the national average. So we're dealing with an older housing stock that has potentially blighted, has structural issues. Um, as a result of population decline that occurred between the 50s and early 2000s, there was really no incentive for real estate development. So housing did not grow. While our population had grown some prior to COVID, it still did not warrant significant investment by private, the private sectors or even the public sector to, to create different types or new housing. COVID hit and we saw change. We saw an increase in population where people from, uh, the major urban core of New York, Philadelphia, and even to some degree, the Lehigh Valley start continuing to move in this direction. The ability to work remotely created opportunities and we saw population growth. So you couple that with the other phenomenon that we've been watching slowly since the early 2000s, and we call it the westward migration, which are individuals that lived in New York and New Jersey, uh, first-tier suburbs started moving east because the cost of housing in those communities was significant, and continued that movement through the Poconos where you saw that increase in population from the mid 90s to the early 2000s. And they continued some migration here, and we first noticed that increase in, in early 2010. It was stagnant for a while and then COVID bumped it up. What we noted are an increase in populations in two different demographies. One, the middle, the upper-middle income families that moved here for lower-cost housing because they could buy the housing in our suburbs, uh, with a half an acre of land for 300,000, 400,000, 500,000, or a million in New York and suburbs in New Jersey. We also saw migration of the low to moderate income individuals that were primarily moving here again for the cost of housing, but were, were moving into more rental housing or very small, single-family homes. The population that fell into that low to moderate income population was primarily of different races and ethnicities. It helped create some of the incredible diversity we have here. Um, their familial populations, you often see multiple generations under one roof because they take care of their elders. With all of this growth within the past two decades and no development, there's obviously a shortage. And you couple that with the availability of, of older housing that may be blighted and we've got the perfect storm. So the opportunity to do the housing study, uh, was based upon this data and the need for examining what types of housing are really needed, what price points are really needed, where are optimal areas for development, and that's where the focus of the study is. So we used a mixed method approach. We studied a lot of data. We read a lot of zoning codes. And there were stakeholder interviews from people that are involved in housing, from real estate developers to real estate agents to nonprofit housing organizations, to get their feedback on housing. There was a significant emphasis on zoning because of some of the solutions to mitigate the housing challenge involved changing lot sizes, reducing lot sizes to increase density, to look at more infill development, adaptive development, and reuse. And learning, what we did learn from some of the interviews from the private developers was the fact that zoning is really a problem that has impacted, negatively impacted, housing growth and development in the county. When you have 20 of the communities that use the county for their zoning, you have four cities that have their own zoning departments, and those four cities account really for nearly 23% of the real estate transactions in the county on an annual basis. The remainder of the municipalities also have their own zoning code. Some of the land that is available for new development is in multiple jurisdictions. I, for one, can attest to part of my driveway being in Pittston Township, but the rest of my house is in Dupont. Things like that, where developers have to go to multiple jurisdictions to get zoning approval for different kinds of developments, regardless whether they're single-family homes or multifamily units, becomes a deterrent to the private sector for investment. So we studied zoning very heavily, and, and there are many applicable recommendations to support changes in zoning and to encourage more municipalities to come to the county to have their zoning all under one umbrella. And as I mentioned, there were other interviews as well from folks engaged in housing from different perspectives. We completed a synthesis of the data, and then what you're going to see in the report is analysis of the supply of housing that is currently available, housing characteristics such as age and size, whether they're primarily a single-family, multifamily, high-rise apartments, if any of them are age-related or inclusive for individuals with disabilities. And then looking at the market analysis, studying the sales transactions, noting the price changes, where the volume is taking place. I probably went too much into zoning, so I won't tell that anymore, but we, it is in there. We included the qualitative input, and then identified case studies from around the country where communities like ours, regions like ours, have had housing issues and found success in developing different types of housing at different price points in both the more urban, suburban, and rural areas of different counties. And then, based on all of that data, we made some, some recommendations that we thought the county could be a partner in. We certainly don't see the county as the entity that has to fix the problem, but can work with other partners in other jurisdictions, with the private sector, with the nonprofit sector to improve the housing. And then the report ends with an appendix of profiles of all of the municipalities within Luzerne County, and their housing characteristics and socioeconomic characteristics of their current community. I'll bring Jill up next, and she'll be able to tell you some more of the findings that we uncovered and some of the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, the full report, again, is kind of a heavy lift, and I'm just going to touch on a few highlights to give you just a really higher-level, general understanding of what you can find in the overall piece. And we do know from our analysis that most countywide home sales are concentrated in just a fraction of municipalities. The top three of those are the cities of Hazelton, Wilkes-Barre, and Butler Township. And before I touch on tenure, I do also want to point out that the rise in home sales has coincided with inward migration that, that Teri discussed. And the growth in interest rates really had put, or relieved some of the pressure on those rising rates. They still remain very much out of touch for a lot of middle-income and lower-income individuals. Tenure, which really refers to ownership versus rental status, that has remained pretty steady over the years, even despite incremental growth in the number of housing units that are available in the county. And really, I should say that the tenure for the overall, the general population has remained steady, but the tenure for older adults, the older community, has not been so steady. Aside from that outlier there that you can see in 2014, generally, the rental status among older adults has decreased, and homeownership has increased over the past several years, and that also coincides with growing opportunities for aging in place. Vacancy rates have remained fairly elevated over the years, though you can see the drop at, again, at the peak of the pandemic when the market tightened up. And most of those vacancies are specific to single-family detached units. And of course, most of the county units are, in fact, single-family detached units. There is somewhat of a rural-urban divide, however. The age of the housing stock is, is quite high, but in the rural areas, the building there does tend to be a little bit more recent than the building in some of the more urban areas. That is also consistent with fuel usage. Although utility gas is the most common resource across the county, fuel oil is much more common in rural areas. So there was a reason to recognize some rural-urban divide during our analysis. Our qualitative analysis that encompasses the interviews with developers, representatives of the public and private sectors, did reveal some pretty common themes as well, and they did also confirm a lot of the findings from our secondary data. And that is that the housing stock currently is not meeting the needs of the population. There's a certain insufficient supply of middle housing, in particular, for housing for middle-income individuals. There is a lot of confusion surrounding zoning, a lot of conflict surrounding zoning, even direct conflict in terms of codes and what those codes mean. And a lot of interest in blight remediation and adaptive reuse as well. So there are some recommendations summarized here, which, again, pertain to adaptive reuse, bringing vacant properties to market, potential for CDFIs, accessible housing, regionalization, and so forth. So again, I just want to reiterate that these are some, some very general highlights that probably do not even come close to capturing the full picture of the story that's available through the study, but I hope that'll kind of give you an idea and that you can take some time and read it more thoroughly. We do have it available online. We'll also be forwarding it, of course, to council, and we'll be happy to answer further questions or to reconnect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have one or two questions, or maybe even comments. So in the, the very last slide, I do know that, that the county does do a couple of these things. And one of the things that we did actually with our ARPA funding was to give grants to several of the land banks in the area where they've been dealing with blighted properties. And although that's kind of a drop in the bucket, that is something that we have done, and we, we certainly would like to be able to partner with them in more ways than just that. But the other thing that has come to our table frequently here on county council are issues of zoning, which council doesn't deal with. We have a zoning board that deals with those issues, and we have a planning and zoning department. And my understanding, or at least my opinion on that issue, was always that it would be better for the individual municipalities to control their own zoning, since, you know, the issues that they typically deal with when it comes to having a variance for like a construction site or a waste transfer facility, for a recent example. But when they come to the county, the zoning ordinance is, is, there are actually 22 municipalities in the county that do use our county zoning. But I was under the impression, or had the opinion, that it would be better for the actual municipalities to control their own zoning. Is there, is there a reason why it would be better if it was a county-wide or regionalized approach?
Yes, as a matter of fact, there is. So we, we were studying communities and regions across the country, and we found that the, the most successful ones are ones that have regional planning entities, where everything is consistent across all municipalities within a particular county, and in some cases, multiple counties where there can be seen as a strong economic interdependence. A prime example of what we see is in the Lehigh Valley. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission has been an incredible success story in, in handling regional planning for the two counties out in the Lehigh Valley, and they've extended their work into regional transportation and workforce and economic development. And on December 6, the executive director, Becky Bradley, is coming up for a work session, which we would invite all members of, of council to, as well as Lackawanna County Commissioners, to talk about regional planning. One of the things that we espouse are regional solutions to problems that could be more cost-effective, cohesive, and really connect the communities, especially since there is such an incredible economic interdependence between the business community and the workforce among the counties. So she, she was going to come up and give a presentation and talk about how the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission got started, why it got started, some of the legal hassles they faced in combining all of these efforts under one roof, and then talk about the lessons learned, as well as the benefits they saw.
All right, thank you. Any other questions by council members? Ms. McDermott?
I don't have a question. Actually, we did have the presentation done for several of us, and I do have the whole report, and I did forward that to Mr. Sabatino and Ms. Stevenson. And we are trying to put this together, as you know, like I've reached out a couple of times. It's a little more difficult than I had thought. We're in the process of trying to get bylaws. So I did reach out to other housing coalitions throughout the state and get their bylaws. It seems like they do a lot more work than what I would envision, you know, a housing coalition here in Luzerne County to do. So that's kind of like where we're stuck right now.
And I know you've connected with Shane Powers, the executive director of Neighbor Works Northeast PA, and I believe there's some, some other meetings coming up. Neighbor Works offers great financial literacy and budgeting programs for individuals looking at buying housing and trying to establish a program post-home ownership up to 12 months to be able to continue to provide that advice and guidance to keep people in their homes so that the eviction rates go down, or foreclosure rates go down as well.
Mr. Haas?
Angel, hey, Teri, thanks for coming. I really appreciate your annual report that you do every year, so I really look forward to that. So thank you so much for that. I have a couple of questions, because this is a great place to live, our metro area, all the way up to Scranton, all the way down to Hazelton. And I've been seeing this for years. Those of us involved in political life will make the rounds, so I, I have a real pulse on things, like a lot of my colleagues do too. And it's, it's really neat to see, in, in, like, five years ago, in South Wilkes-Barre, there were like two vacant homes for every one level. They're all filled up today. We've got influx, mostly Dominican immigrants, but other groups too. And, you know, we see that the old, the older residents here are leaving the city areas, they're going out to the suburbs, and we see this too. And what makes this such a great place to live is that we have, like, our cities, our cities, and our country is like country. And I really appreciate that. We had a debate last week about Butler Township, about property we own, and the consensus was, we really like our green space here. So, you know, I, I don't know what advice you have for that, because I would hate to make the same mistakes that our other metro areas have made across the country, specifically the Lehigh Valley. Okay, we've got people running away from Lehigh Valley because it's congested. I was down there for a doctor's appointment last week. It's a mess. And a couple of things I wanted to ask. Have, have you, has your, has the Institute done any studies on the, the negative impacts of our warehouse development here? There, there's a lot of tax abatement programs. We're artificially stimulating that industry, and it's, it's bringing workers to fill those roles, right? So my question is, so the, the government is creating a situation, and then it, it seems like we're looking for the government to create another solution to that situation, and it's a big circle. I don't know if your studies have done that. I'd really like to learn more about that, to be honest with you. And then, secondly, a lot of our new immigrants, they're concerned with these federal relocation programs, and if you looked at this too, that new immigrants are coming in, and it's, it's making life difficult for a lot of, of our immigrants that aren't, aren't seeking asylum or, or because of the border situation, whatever is going on there. So have you looked at the data from Catholic Social Services, these other, like, resettlement groups that are artificially bringing people here and other places? I don't know if you've looked at that, if your report speaks to that.
We haven't looked at the data on immigration, although it has been a topic at our Anchors for Equity meetings, which are, are, it's our economic mobility project with the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia. And looking at the growth in the immigrant population and trying to identify ways to teach, teach English, educate, and get them working in our healthcare systems, which are in dire need of employees at every end of the spectrum, including a bunch of entry-level workers, like personal care aides and community health workers and things like that. But we haven't really looked at the numbers. We do have enough data, I think, to be dangerous on the challenges that the immigrants are facing as they, they move into the area. Obviously, language is a huge barrier. Resources are a barrier. Individuals that are working, we've come across an enclave of Gujarati and Hindu individuals with, many with incredible credentials that aren't really recognized in this country, that are working in distribution centers at $18 and $20 an hour, and they-
And having multiple jobs at $18.
Exactly, yeah. So they, they work the Monday to Thursday shift in one distribution center, and then the Friday, Saturday, Sunday shift in other distribution center, just to be able to make ends meet. So we do know it's a challenge. There has been upward pressure on distribution wages. Starting salaries now seem to be in the average of $18 an hour for a warehouse worker and shift differentials for swing and weekend. Obviously, the growth in the distribution and logistics industry has been phenomenal throughout the whole quarter of '81, from Hazelton, actually, all the way through Lackawanna County. And it has created opportunity, not always living wage jobs, but in some cases, they, they have improved to that degree. But that's also another reason why housing is, is such a critical aspect. And going back to your first question, we agree, there, there definitely needs to be delineation in keeping the urban core perhaps more dense, the suburbs a little bit more dense than the rural west ends. There are opportunities for adaptive reuse of a bunch of vacant industrial buildings. I mean, what's happening downtown Wilkes-Barre right now, where all of the old banks that, that have left those high-rise buildings are being turned into apartments, which is a great start. There's many more buildings like that. But the challenge is, for the private sector developer, is they're, they're coming in, well, they say it's market rate, it's, it's actually a high-market rate because individuals coming into the workforce is like recent college grads, or even those earning the average wage for Luzerne County can't really afford those rents. So there, that's where the challenge in the middle-income housing comes into place, whether it's rental or home ownership. But I think there's opportunities for that infill development to do exactly what you're saying and, and keep the rural area rural. I don't think we need to lose that.
Yeah, because I think, and I really appreciate what you're sharing, because I like this dialogue. I don't mean to take up too much more time, Mr. Chair, but, you know, we're looking at, I hope federal policy is part of this, because the federal government is causing a lot of this situation. This is not natural, a lot of this growth. And we have to deal with it here at the county level, and sometimes we make bad county policy too. But for the most part, these are issues that if they're, if they're going to, if they're going to stick their hands in, in our backyard, the fund should follow.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see more studies done on that, about really what's going, because we, we had these flights that where they're fleeing, they're flying illegal minors into our area, and to, oh, you remember that story? Couple of years. This is happening. It's still happening, that kind of stuff, and I get reports of this. So I hope with, this can be part of the conversation, because it's, this is a tough job.
And we can send you a reading list.
Especially our new people.
Yes, we, we have companion studies to this housing study, which do address recommendations for both state and federal policy changes to mitigate some of the challenges that we're seeing in housing development.
Thank you so much, ladies. Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino?
Just to follow up on something that Mr. Haas touched on, has the study looked at the impact of LURDA's on housing, like the property tax abatements that council approves?
No, we haven't studied the impact on LURDA's.
Thank you.
Any other members of council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
Would council like to take a quick recess so we can take- Would council like to take a quick recess, so we can take that picture outside?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll come back at 7:52.
Recording stopped.
Oh, really? All right, council, is everybody back? Okay, meeting is, all right, we will re-adjourn the meeting. Do we need roll call again, Ms. Lawrence? All right, I guess we'll do a roll call. That will do it.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Recording in progress.
Ms. Grishinowski?
Here.
Mr. Liscavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wlovich?
Present.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present.
Number three, discussion regarding the resolution requesting a statewide local share account grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Huntsville extension.
Good evening again. This is to submitted application for the LSA grant for Huntsville Road Extension, County Road 18 in Jackson and Lehman Townships, also known as Old 115. Approximately 4,800 feet, .91 of a mile. 95% is in Lehman Township, 5% in Jackson Township. For a total estimated cost of $524,300. This is in the top three roadways that I get complaints on, so I'm quite excited about this. It's an important evacuation route for Jackson and Lehman Townships, so important for them, important for us. No match required at the moment, so that is also good. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Haas?
Ms. Wlovich, my number one complaint, so thank you. I don't think we have to debate this, right? This is great. Let's move on it.
All right, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number four, recommendations from the county's risk managers, Zigman and Company, Zigman Company regarding security bond work session limits to protect against risk of loss for calendar year 2025.
We have Ruth Morosky Keller, who will be, when she turns the microphone, speaking.
Speaking as soon as somebody has the technology.
All right.
I'm Ruth Morosky Keller. I am the president of the Zigman Company and the contracted risk manager for the county. This evening, I'd like to introduce Courtney Scamodella. She works with us. She's a senior consultant for us, and I'm introducing her because she comes to all of your safety committee meetings, and she's also involved with the insurance renewal this year. So with regard to our recommendation for the bond limit, I don't know how many of you are aware of Act 106, but back in 2011, the Commonwealth decided that instead of all the small bonds and surety bonds that elected officials, sheriffs, and municipal elected officials had to carry, they could combine it in one policy, an employee dishonesty policy that included an endorsement for faithful performance of duties. So that saved a lot of money, a lot of paperwork, and our job is to come up with a limit that we feel is sufficient to cover all the officials in the county. So our recommendation is based basically on tax limits, or tax duplicates, and also on the fact that it should be sufficient to cover all members of the county. Currently, you have a $5 million policy, which we've recommended for a number of years, and we feel that that is sufficient for the various different positions. There is one caveat on the policy that you currently have, and it's on most employee dishonesty policies, and that it does not include tax collection. So the individuals in the county who have tax collection duties have to have their own separate bonds, which would be the tax manager, and also the division of budget has a small but varied tax collection duty. So what we are recommending is to go forward with a $5 million policy for the general electorate, and the tax collectors have $5 million for the office manager with the tax duties, and $2 million for the head of budget finance. So those are the basic insurance details. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Just one question, Mr. Ruth, good to see you again. What is our cost increasing for the premium?
This coming year?
Yeah.
The current broker is anticipating maybe a 10% increase, which isn't bad. Yours currently just under $20,000 a year for that policy. And the two bonds that are separate surety bonds are somewhere in the range of $6,000 to $7,000 each, and we really don't anticipate there to be any increase in those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on, number five, discussion regarding the resolution approving a contract with Elite Revenue Solutions for the collection of delinquent real estate tax services.
Hi, good evening. We're recommending that Elite Revenue be awarded the contract for collection of delinquent taxes. They have been the tax collection agency that we're using for delinquent taxes for the last 14 years. They've done a great job. The resolution is for a two-year contract with an option to renew two additional years. We did RFP the service. They were the only bidder. There are other value-added things that we do get from Elite, in addition to just the great job that they are doing on the tax revenue collection. They collect about $8.7 million for us a year in just counting taxes. In addition to that, they pay us rent, because they are located in our Penn Place office, so we receive $72,000 in rent from them, as well as them using our pro bono attorney and sheriff's department. So we also get revenue, you know, in that respect. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Rozell? Mr. Haas?
Hey, Ms. Rozell, good to see you. Hey, it's interesting, there's nobody else responding to the RFP. Is that normal in previous years? Have we had no other?
Yes.
People put, okay, that's an easy one.
The last time, my recollection of the last time that we did an RFP for this, there were two. One was Elite, and one was a company out of Texas that wanted to put drop boxes, you know, as our collection, so.
We don't like drop boxes around here.
No, we don't like drop boxes, especially when there's checks in them. So, but, yeah, we don't get a big response.
And I think having a local presence is also, you know, important when you're talking about tax collection. I mean, the taxpayers, you know, enjoy, well, no one enjoys paying their taxes, I guess, but it's easy, you know, it's good for them to be able to come to Penn Place and, you know, deal with a person face-to-face in the taxing office. So they appreciate that.
Yeah, I was thinking, when we began Home Rule, I don't remember there being another collector besides Elite, or Northeast Revenue was prior, but, yeah, okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. All right, number six, discussion regarding the resolution approving a contract with Michael Baker International to perform the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Dan Reese.
Is this on?
Mr. Reese, yes.
Good evening, everyone. In front of you is a resolution to approve Michael Baker International Incorporated as the, well, we're recommending that you approve the contract that we have with Michael Baker International to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2025. If you have any questions about it, I'm here to ask or answer, but, yeah.
Any council members have any questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reese. Quick and painless. All right, we will now move on into public comment. Anybody in the room, public comment? We have one hand up on the Zoom. Mr. Raabo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Mark Raabo of Hazelton speaking. With regards to the housing presentation that was just made, I would like to submit to you, Mr. Chair, members of council, manager of Croco Mo and administration officials. I was never interviewed for that study. I am a lifelong resident of Hazelton. I am very experienced in blight remediation, and I serve on the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority, which has the sole vested authority under state law to remediate and remove blight from Luzerne County. So, and also, I was helpful to the previous council that established the Luzerne County Blight Commission, Blighted Property Committee, that identifies and certifies blighted properties in Luzerne County, which I do serve on as a redevelopment authority representative. So you would think that I would be re-interviewed for something like that, but I'm not feeling the love, Mr. Chair, just saying. And so I just want to point out one thing about Hazelton that was made in the report. Hazelton could not build any new housing, is because Hazelton has no buildable land to build new affordable housing on. The only place that Hazelton could, or anywhere in the Hazelton area you could build, is in the surrounding townships, like Butler Township, actually Hazel Township would have the land, but Hazel Township does not, will not allow for any new building of affordable housing, because then Hazel Township would cease to be a township. They would become a third-class city. So that's why you're not going to see any new affordable housing, large affordable housing projects built in Hazel Township. So I think details like that matter, Mr. Chair. I don't know about you, but I think that Luzerne County should have its own, like Councilperson McDermott said about the housing, you know, committee, or some kind of an event that would allow for stakeholders in the county and authorities that deal with blight, like the redevelopment authority and Blighted Property Committee, and our state legislators, you know, throw out, you know, like have a discussion on it, and maybe the legislative committee could have something like that. If you and Mr. Wlovich convene such a meeting, I'll be there. I'll be there on the holidays, Mr. Chair, so if you want to have it, I'm there. All right? Have a good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raabo. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.